We do have a quorum. John, if you could just review the highlights of the meeting for us?
Okay, so tonight's agenda is consent with many of those day-to-day things. Exciting to report the work on the referendum. Also have a demo of the Learner's Edge Parent Portal View, which is really cool. Policies, of course. You'll be taking action on the school year calendar study. And Margot's got the proposed tax levy, some more policies for action, and then our Health Services Associates Agreement for approval. And then some staff recognition at the end.
Great. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is approving the minutes of the August 14th work session, regular session, and the September 11th work session. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the August 14th work session, August 14th regular session, and the September 11th regular work session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have recognition HopDyna tech cohort participants.
Steve Butner will introduce the HopDyna participants.
This is now, I think, our sixth or seventh year that we've done the HopDyna cohort. It's a technology integration cohort that's been very successful. And every year, we get teachers and the digital learning specialists to take extra time to learn how to leverage technology and put technology in the classroom, leverage the digital assets that we have in the classroom. Unfortunately, this time of year, it's a little bit tough, and so we only have one representative of the cohort. But I'd like to have Mr. Walker talk a little bit about it and maybe ask what was one of the most beneficial things of the cohort.
Thanks, Steve. So the HopDyna cohort for the last six, seven years has been a series of four courses. The last three years has been in partnership with Hopkins. And so teachers from both school districts have attended. They take four different graduate-level classes. They can do it for now board credit or through Hamlin University. And then we run them through the program with both face-to-face sessions and online sessions. And it's been a rich, rewarding program for our staff to enhance their abilities in the classroom and give them more flexibility in how they're teaching. And so tonight, we have Heather Edom with us from Cornelia, who is one of the members who is here to receive her certificate. And so Heather, congratulations. And Heather, is there something that was, that you kind of look back on through the cohort as a highlight of your experience?
Oh, my gosh, I can feel my face getting red because I didn't know I was going to say anything. I'm...
Would you just keep your talent...
Yuck. Oh. I can keep it even shorter than that. How's that? You know what? Actually, though, I'm really glad Edina does this because I have learned so much just from, well, not even just from Michael and Megan, but also from meeting with other teachers in other districts. Hopkins, there are some great teachers in Hopkins that we exchanged emails. We've talked about things we've done. We've collaborated together outside of the classroom. So we've learned a lot, and it's stuff that's really easy to do, that I've been able to go back into my building and then tell my teammates about and have them try and have them use stuff we never would have had a chance to do before. So I've really enjoyed it, and I hope we keep doing it. And actually, I enjoyed it so much, I'm doing the second year this year. Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you again, and we look forward to the HopDyna 2.0 this year. Thank you.
Next, we have hearings from members of the audience. We do welcome community input. We request that people keep their comments to three minutes or less. We would ask if you have comments about particular employees, teachers, board members, superintendents, whatever, that you follow our Board 206 policy, which says you're not supposed to discuss them in an open mic. You can submit them through the proper channels. We don't normally have board discussion on issues that are presented. We do request typically that someone from administration gets back to whoever speaks. And with that, I will call our first person. And Heather, by the way, your handwriting on your last name is getting worse, but Heather Teetz...
[laughing]
But, yes, no, it's not your first time. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Heather Teetz. I have a, I gotta do it right, it's new year, fourth grader in Normandale and a seventh grader at Valley View. Okay? I've been before the Board before. I brought up last spring that I had received from the Valley View administration that they were looking to stop offering enriched courses in middle school, starting in the 18, 19 school year. I knew that was a surprise to the Board and some people in the administration. As of last spring, I know that hadn't gone through teaching and learning. What I would like is a confirmation of whether that's still being discussed, and if so, when we would be looking for parent input. I think I've had several members, conversations with several members of the Board several times where the members of the Board said, the one thing that's pretty consistent in Edina is that all the parents want more enriched and accelerated options in middle school, not less. Okay? So I just, I'm looking for confirmation that that is not on the table, or if it is, when we were going to discuss it publicly. Okay? Now, I've heard over the summer that gifted reading in sixth grade is now on the table to get rid of, too. So same request for sixth grade reading. Is it on the table to get rid of it, gifted reading? And, you know, yes or no? And if yes, when are we going to discuss it publicly? Okay? And the reason for this is, as I continue to say, and Superintendent Schultz, you haven't had the benefit of all my different emails. I might resend them and give you that opportunity, or you can look in the archives.
I look forward to the reading.
Okay. And if I do resend them, I don't need the saying, "I got them." [laughing] Personalized learning does not equate to appropriate academic rigor for all students unless there's differentiated content. And we have seen differentiated delivery. We've seen differentiated methods of showing mastery. We have seen zero, zero differentiated content. As an example, my son is in science, and his voice and choice this week was whether he got to cut and paste a fold-out of the Earth's different layers or whether he got to color one. Okay? There was no, do I have this material mastered and I can go do something faster or do, go faster through the material? There was no mastery and I can go do something different. There was just a choice of which probably highly not at the right level of academic material. And I want to talk about this because I have been with five very bright 12-year-old boys as they sit there and discuss an assignment, and they're talking about what they're going to do, and then one pulls out the rubric and goes, "Oh, guys, we don't have to do any of this. To get an A, we only have to do this." And they're like, "You're right." And even though I'm not, I'm supposed to be listening and not talking, I say, "Well, you could do that. You could go do more." And they're like, "Why? I mean, why? I'm going to get an A." And the same group of kids, slightly small group, was in the back of my car, talking about gifted reading. And in gifted reading, there is no rubric. And they're saying, "Man, I don't, I mean, I'm actually going to have to try. I'm going to have to put some effort in." That sucks, right? Because there's no rubric. There's no rubric that says, "Do this," and you get an A. Okay? You have to put effort in. You have to do your best work. And I'm going to repeat what I said in the last board meeting I spoke, which is, I can have a conversation with my 12-year-old, who's very conscientious, whenever I talk about him, I want to say this, very conscientious, very mature, and I can say to him, "You know, it's really more appropriate for you to take this enriched course or this accelerated course." And he'll go, "You're right, Mom." And he'll take it, and he'll do that level of work because it's expected of him, and he'll do a great job. But if you ask me in personalized learning to go lesson by lesson and be that on top of it, to know what it is, and then to say to him, "Do more work," when it's going to mean nothing, because you're in this class with everybody else. They all have to do X to get this A. But you want him to do more because he's capable of more, but there's nothing in it for him except that personal gratification? He's a 12-year-old boy. I'm sorry, that maturity level's not there to see that. I don't care how much you engage him. You can't engage him more than YouTube. Okay? You can't engage him more than playing with his friends. You have to ask more of him. And you have to ask more of all of them. They will do what we expect of them. Okay? But they're going to look to the side, and if they're saying, "Well, this guy over here is getting an A and not doing that in this class that we're all in, why should I do more?" So if you're not, I'm done. If you're not different, here's the deal. Personalized learning is nothing if you're not differentiating content. Thank you.
So, thank you, Heather. So I know you're shy about sending emails, but if you don't get a follow-up phone call, could you please email me? Next is Siobhan White.
Hello.
Welcome.
As you know, personalized learning has not yet been adopted by the district, yet there have been several personalized learning pilot programs in the elementary schools, and there are teaching practices currently in effect. Our tax dollars have paid for the construction of the new personalized learning environments and purchased the new furniture for them, all of these without board approval of PL. I'm concerned about how the effectiveness of these initiatives is being measured, and I'm not the only parent who has asked that question of the administration and raised this issue at school board meetings. Not surprisingly, many parents are concerned that the 2017 levy referendum includes language that funds will provide a personalized learning experience for each and every student. I've spoken to many parents who share the same concerns, and many of the changes, that many of the changes in instruction under the umbrella of personalized learning reduce the direct instruction and interaction with the teachers. This is, there is research that backs up the claim that interaction with a good teacher can have a significant positive impact on a student, and we are increasingly concerned about the following three issues. Number one, our children are spending more and more class time on screens, such as watching a video or a computer app to deliver the information versus being taught the information by the teachers. There's much less class discussion and opportunities to go in-depth in a subject area. When my son's class had a geography unit, they watched a slideshow prepared by the teacher. This was followed immediately by an online quiz. There was no class discussion or questions, nor were they tested later at the end of the unit to see if they retained the information. For the application projects, the kids followed a link to a website and cut and pasted information and answers into a pre-made online layout. Again, there was no class discussion and no actual writing. These types of cut-and-paste projects, making a slideshow or PowerPoint presentation with information they pull from the web, are increasingly becoming the norm. There is so little actual research in handwriting, they don't use their hands anymore, only the Chromebooks, and the kids are relying on spell check and grammar check and putting less time and thought into their work. There's less critical thinking, less analysis, and less comprehension. Number two, there's no instruction for students during win time unless the students are behind. And there's little enrichment for the students who remain in the regular classroom. Last year, my son played three and a half hours of video games a week during win time. Three and a half hours a week. For him, this wasn't study hall or homework time. While students are also given the opportunity to write a story, it wasn't for credit and felt like busy work. So he chose to play Prodigy with his friends, which is well below his grade level. That's three and a half hours a week. He could have been learning something. What a wasted opportunity. I've heard from several parents of middle school children that their kids were stuck in adult coloring and napkin folding as their enrichment classes offered during win time last year. If win stands for what I need, then every child should benefit from this time. My children are capable of more academic rigor and complain often that they're bored at school. Why aren't their needs being met? As it currently stands, win time is inequitable and a waste of class time for many students. Number three, finally, when students finish their work before others, are often given computer playtime versus enrichment or additional instruction. My son has sometimes played games like ABCA during class time for 30 minutes or longer. So many teaching opportunities are being lost, and more and more, it feels like my children are at an online school versus a brick-and-mortar school. Why should we outsource our children's education when we have excellent teachers right in the classroom? I want my children to learn from their teachers. Teachers lead discussions, spark interest, and teach a topic in depth. I want them to hear the questions of their peers and learn from them. I don't want them learning in a vacuum, staring at a screen and being taught by an app. But this seems to be the direction that personalized learning is taking. We chose to move to Edina and send our children to Edina Public Schools, and our children deserve better. Thank you.
Next is Karen Gabler, Julie Green, and Caroline Correa.
Edina's School Board members, thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Karen Gabler, and along with Julie Green and Caroline Correa, I am here representing Vote Yes EPS. Vote Yes EPS is a citizen group formed around supporting the yes vote on this fall's referendum vote of renewing the operating levy. We want to thank all of the Edina Public Schools sitting board members for their support behind renewing the levy. We are also happy to report that all 12 candidates for school board threw their support behind the levy at last week's candidate forum. As well, Edon Education Minnesota Edina enthusiastically supports the Vote Yes EPS campaign to renew the levy. Edina knows that its teachers are some of the best of the best. An important group that we also want to thank tonight is the community members of Edina. This community, time and again, supports its schools. We have a tradition of excellence, and a part of that excellence is because we, as parents, grandparents, can analyze the value in our schools. We have seen firsthand the enthusiasm this community has shown in coming together to renew this levy so that our district can sustain our current programs. We have core groups active at each of the schools and throughout the community, whose job it is to inform voters what is on the ballot this fall and encourage a yes vote. Without this levy, you know that $13.1 million will need to be cut from the operating budget in the first year alone. That will impact every school. I can't imagine what that would look like. $13.1 million is the same as cutting 150 teachers, one of our middle schools' yearly operating budgets, or one and a half months of daily expenses for Edina Public Schools. For any of you in the audience tonight or watching this at home, we encourage you to check out our Facebook page, Vote Yes EPS, or our soon-to-be-live website, votyeseps.com, for more information, or contact Julie, Caroline, or myself with questions. We are a community that values our youth and realizes the power of a quality education. We look forward to the opportunity to reinvest in Edina Public Schools. The gift of a quality education is something that will serve our children today and for the rest of their lives. We know that when a school district is strong, it can be a great indicator of a strong community. I trust that the people of Edina will stand with Vote Yes EPS and get out on November 7th to vote yes for renewing the operating levy and showing their support for Edina Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So those are the public speakers we have. I have a question for Mr. Smazel, or Dr. Smazel?
Dr. Smazel.
Doctor. No, not yet? How about Randy Smazel? And it, I'm a little reluctant to ask your question without a prep, but we've had a couple of people come up and ask questions about the status of personalized learning. I'm wondering if there's any information you might be able to give that would help answer where we're at.
Sure. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? First of all, when you go to the district website and you look at the strategic plan dropdown menu, the very first core strategy listed there is to create a personalized learning experience for all students. That has been, that was created through the last strategic plan process, maybe 2012, I think. And I, I agree with so many things that have been said this evening about what we desire for the student learning experience, and I believe really what's being described is a disconnect. Let me explain that in a second here. Our speaker, one of our speakers referred to a policy, was really referring to a policy that hasn't been approved, not the strategic plan. The strategic plan around personalizing the experience for students was approved many years ago. What we've been trying to draft and develop is a policy that helps guide the implementation of it, because we want a quality implementation. We want a quality learning experience for all kids. What that policy was beginning to address in its draft was the, really, the goals of that effort and to help create clarity around that kind of experience, to define metrics, to set parameters. And by metrics, I mean, how do we use performance data? How do, how do we use narrative data from students, from staff, from families to examine the learning experience and make sure it's what we want as an Edina community? And there'll be much more discussion about ways to move that forward. There are things that are going well. There are things that can be improved, absolutely. And we are committed to improving them because we're going to create quality learning experiences for all kids. We are excited to be able to bring forward, at various points this year, some different presentations around what teachers are doing at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level to create personalized experiences. We'll bring those to the Board, and it'll be a great opportunity for discourse and discussion with our community about, again, the learning experiences that we desire. Classroom discussion, writing, those are all very much still activities that occur in personalized learning environments. And so those are really important to the kind of environments we're trying to create. So if there is a classroom where there's not enough discussion or not enough writing occurring, that's not because of personalization. That's a, that's a classroom discussion that we need to have with the teachers, because those are important instructional activities that we'll continue to do. There was a statement made that PL is nothing if you are not differentiating content. I completely agree. Part of personalization is that it's competency-based. That's kind of one of our first tenants. As kids demonstrate competencies, they're able to move on to additional competencies. Those are more in-depth in some cases for some kids. They're faster in some cases for some kids, but they're articulated competencies, K-12. So I'm just going to say, I, we still have a disconnect about how we're, what the vision of personalized learning is and how some community members feel it's playing out. But I would be, I'm excited for the discussion, the ongoing discussion, to continue to clarify, to meet metrics that people are excited about, that show how our schools are improving and growing, and to also hear from our teachers and some of our students who are doing, who are more advanced in the work at both elementary, middle school, and high school. So I'd like to bring that forward to the Board at successive board meetings in the future.
Thank you. So if I could summarize, it sounds like what you're saying is, we haven't adopted a personalized, personalized learning policy, because in fact, that policy has come up for discussion but has not been adopted. But the strategic plan adopted personalized learning, and so it is part of what we're trying to accomplish.
That's correct. And this isn't unique to Edina. This isn't unique to our country. This is an international effort on how to make learning better and learning environments better for kids. And learn, learning is ultimately personal. It occurs in every child's brain, so...
So I'm assuming that you would encourage the speakers to talk to you directly about where they think a particular classroom is not achieving our objective?
Absolutely.
Not to give you more emails or anything, but...
We love communication.
All right. I kind of broached the subject, so I don't know if another board member has a question that they want. Otherwise, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
I've got a quick question. So Randy, I, I think it's very encouraging to hear that the policy's not settled, that we recognize there are things that need to be accomplished, that we're moving toward doing it right. But where I don't see the questions that were asked tonight being addressed is, while we're in this period of transition, what are we doing to ensure that we've got consistent quality education across our schools and are doing the best we can as we move toward further refining personalized learning?
Or maybe, Randy, when we're, when we talked about professional development in terms of how are we going to work with that to help maybe move that along?
So one of the things that we're working on is we're drafting a new professional development framework that identifies competencies that all of our teachers and educators will continue to grow in. So that's, that's one of the areas that we're moving in. Secondly, we still have performance data. We have performance data throughout the system that we are collecting, and by that, I mean, we have both standardized assessments and localized assessments. We are going through a, we still have our curriculum review cycle where we sit and we take a look at the different curriculums that we have, like we're going through math right now, K-5 at the elementary level, and we're looking at the standards, we're looking at the resources that are available, and we're looking at instructional tools for teaching mathematics. We are looking at how different grade levels at the elementary level, different content areas at middle school and high school are meeting the standards, what assessments they're using to meet the standards, and we're doing that through professional learning community conversations that occur weekly throughout the system. One of our best engines of continuous improvement in the district is the way our teachers are collaborating, collaborating with each other in professional learning communities. And the goals of those professional learning communities is to continue to get clarity on what we want kids to learn, understand, how we're going to assess that learning, what are we going to do if they're not learning it, and how are we going to address the needs of kids who are learning it faster than others or already know it? Those are the four key questions that those PLCs talk through when they meet on a weekly basis. So I know that's a long answer, but to summarize that, we have teachers working in collaborative teams, using a continuous improvement framework to look at what they're doing every day.
Like to move on to the consent agenda? No way, thank you, Randy. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to reports and discussion. Referendum presentation is first.
Very good. So Susan and Margot, can you come up front? So we have been on the road with the referendum presentation, providing the information and data for the public to, to consider around this, around this levy that will happen on November 7th. And I thought what we would do is talk a little bit about, instead of going through the presentation, which I think most of you have heard more than once, we thought we would go through and just talk about what we are presenting and the, oh, okay, there we go. So the, we spend quite a bit, spent some time talking about voter-approved levies and non-voter-approved levies, making the distinction between those two. Really, these levies are always an opportunity to, to teach the public about the nature of, of school finance and is, is exciting as that can be. So the voter-approved referendum history, we, we share with the public, the facilities bond that was passed in May 2015, and the operating levy and capital, capital technology levy that passed in 2011. And then emphasizing that we're renewing the November 2007 levy for July 1st, 2018. So we talk a lot about the mission. You heard a lot about the passion around of students tonight from our, from our public and our parents, and talk about the, the expectation our community has and the mission that we're out to, we are out to accomplish as, as educational leaders in Edina. And it's, and we also emphasize all for all. I'm going to turn it over to Margot to talk about some of the things we do with regards to the fiscal position of the district.
So similar to our standard of excellence for our students' learning, we also have a standard of excellence for our other areas that support student learning to include finance. We have a history of a multi-year budget approach, which I think has served us well in Edina. So whatever our decisions might be, whether it's adding or reducing or generating revenue, we're always looking multiple years out to see the impact on our overall financial position. We are one of two or three districts in the state that has the top bond rating that a school district can achieve. That is a testament not only to the school district, it is a testament to the community, because Moody's and Standards &amp; Poor or other rating agencies look at the overall community and community support. We have made reductions over the year, but we're, years, but we're happy to report that we've, as much as possible, kept it away from the classroom. So only 10% of the adjustments in the last 10 years have had a direct classroom impact. Our main source of funding is the, this state formula times our student-per-pupil formula. The next series of slides go through how we receive our revenue and how we spend our dollars. We talk about the opportunity or the funding gap that the, the formula, state formula hasn't kept pace with inflation, even though we have received increases. The state also has budget challenges, and that becomes our challenge in Edina and other districts throughout the state. And I won't go through each and every slide. This one, the revenue versus expense, we do spend some time on that because one... This one, the revenue versus expense, we do spend some time on that because 1% revenue in Edina equates to about $540,000 because the state formula is only a portion of our budget, yet 1% in expense is roughly 1.1 million. So annually, we have to take a look at our budget and balance it and provide learning opportunities for kids. I'll skip through those. And again, actually, I'm gonna go through part of this tonight as part of the preliminary levy certification, so I won't repeat myself now.
So as we look at this levy, this levy will sustain the quality of Edina educational programs, attracting and retaining quality teachers, still preparing kids for college, career, and life, and personalized learning experiences. You heard about the work in the strategic plan in keeping us competitive nationally and internationally. One thing I will say is that this current operating levy is not dollars that we're adding something to Edina Public Schools. This is to continue to operate the district as it's operating today. This $13.3 million provides 12% of the day-to-day operations of the school district. So we're asking the voters to agree to a levy that is going to gradually increase, or stair-step, if you will, up to different levels. So the first level we're asking in 2018, which should be July 1st, would be to increase the levy from the current $1,412 to $1,857, which would be payable in 2018, and of course, with that inflationary increase. The second part is to stair-step it up or go to the next step two years later in 2020 to 2075 with that inflationary increase. So we're asking the voters to not take the burden of this whole levy at once, but as you have approved, to gradually go up over three years. Margot, do you wanna talk about this one? Or, no, Susan, go ahead, either one. Any one of us, we've done this 16 times, so.
So part of what we look at is the comparison with our neighboring districts, and these are the four districts that we often compare ourselves to. And so if you look at the green bar, that is what the current local authority for operating levy is, so that's the amount per pupil that our neighboring districts and us are getting. So you see the 1412. The middle bar, or the dark orange bar, when there is one, is what would increase then if voters are, if the levies are successful this fall. As you will see, Hopkins and YZR are both going out this fall as well. And then the shaded orange bar is the two-step approach that you see that Edina is proposing to take. Minnetoka took a similar proposal in 2015. So if you look and you see Eden Prairie, they went out in 2015 to increase to their current amount of 1,800. Minnetoka went out in 2015 to do the two-step approach similar to what we are proposing for our voters this fall. The first step was to 1628, and then in 2020, they're looking to go up to the cap at 2,000, a little over 2,000. Hopkins is looking to renew their current authority, and YZR is looking to go to the cap right away this fall.
Just back on that screen for clarification for our audience members, the bar that shows the current state cap looks like it's a little bit below where we're gonna be.
Actually, there is no bar, that's just the top of the graph.
2,000.
That's just at the 2,000, so yeah, the current state cap is 1929, but it goes up inflationary-wise. Yep.
So just for-
There used to be a bar, we took it out.
But I was asking Margot if I could just clarify, although it'll be approximately 275, that's because the cap actually adjusts for inflation.
Yes, the state has a calculation that they adjust for inflation, they also have it projected out. So currently, their estimate for 2020 is $2,075 and 0.07 per pupil unit, so we're basing it on the state calculation.
Okay.
So the median value home, actually, that says average value, but we've since changed it just to make the clarification there, but the median value home in Edina Public Schools is a little over $500,000. I think the last we saw was 509 or something from the city assessors, but it's a little over $500,000. So in order to sort of compute, what would that look like? And we have a much larger tax table on the website as well as a calculator, and so you'll be able to see what that amount would be. And so the increase over the current, what they're currently paying, so assuming that the renewal is through, then an additional amount for next year would be about $182 or about $15 a month. And then the estimates for 2020, when that second step occurs, would be about $10 per year for every $100,000 of market value. So for that same $500,000 home, assuming no changes in property value, they would be paying about, you know, $15 more a year, or a little more, under $5 a month.
So if the operating levy passes, we maintain the quality of programs, we sustain the programs and class sizes we currently have, attract and retain the teachers here in Edina that are doing the great work of preparing kids for college, career, and life, and providing the personalized learning opportunities for all students. If it doesn't pass, we would do a budget cut of over $13 million for 2018-19, and that would result in programs and services being reduced, including offerings, the services, we would increase fees, reduce professional learning opportunities, the list goes on. It would be a, it would be a task that we would have to figure out to balance, balance the budget in Edina if we don't have this levy amount. We're doing an awful lot of work in communicating this, and I'm gonna turn that over to Susan to go through the rest of these.
So as you will see, we apparently have an old version of this in this PowerPoint, but, so we are doing some informational presentations and communications. The first communication just went out with our most recent district newsletter, so that is just the initial communication. We have plans for a couple more mailings to be done before the, two or three more mailings to be done before the vote, as well as a number of community dialogues, as Superintendent Schultz mentioned, we're doing a lot of conversations, and we have over 50 presentations currently scheduled, and more are still coming in. People are asking us to come and just share a little bit of what we shared tonight. Note that, starting as of last Friday, voters can actually go vote at City Hall, or they can, that's not a good sign, restart required, that the voters can go vote at City Hall, we'll just start over, or they can do the absentee by mail. So that is available as of last Friday. And then obviously, just a reminder that the operating levy is the one ballot question, and then there's a school board election to elect four members out of a field of 12, but that is the only thing on the local ballot this fall. And then we have a number of other communications available. We have been building up our website. I know today we added quite a bit to the frequently asked question page, and so we're continuing to add to that. We have a video that we thought we might show tonight, but apparently that's not loaded up, and that will be up tomorrow as well. So what we've got is a longer video that, there's a, shorter ones that we'll be kind of pushing out over the next, every week. And then, but we also have a direct line, so as people have questions, we encourage them to come to the referendum@edinaschools.org. That's a dedicated email line, so we're able to make sure that we're responding to them efficiently. And they kind of come in and then they get triaged and say, okay, this is a finance question, so Margot will answer them, or something like that. We have lots of mailings, as we mentioned, we also have a lot of different videos, social media, electronic newsletters, a lot of information coming up, because we just wanna make sure that voters have the information they need to make a decision. And then a number of public meetings in addition to those other conversations that we're having. There's four scheduled for October. The first one is Thursday, October 5th at 9:00 AM over at the Edina Senior Center. There's another one at 9:30 on the following Thursday at October 12th, that's actually sponsored by the League of Women Voters Edina. And then in that same evening at 7 o'clock here in the boardroom, we will be doing another community conversation, and we're planning for some live stream, assuming the technology works, through Facebook Live. And so there'll be some interactivity for those who are not able to come in person. And then another one, a final meeting, a public meeting on October 24th over at the high school.
So is that open for questions and comments?
I just thought it might be worth clarifying that the role of the district in disseminating information on the levy is to inform. But we, as you heard previously, we have a lovely committee that's taken on the task of supporting the referendum and getting out that message. So just know that it's the superintendent's job and all of his colleagues to inform, give factual information, and then it's up to the community members and our lovely group to then do encouragement beyond that. But I just thought that's always worth clarifying because it does put, you know, administrators in a different position when presenting the information.
Thanks, Sarah.
Great. I mean, I know I've attended a couple of the presentations, I've got it on my list to attend a few more. I hope the public is attending, and if you have questions, bring them.
And I think the thing that we've really learned as we do all these presentations is that every time we get some great questions from people, and so we try to make sure that we incorporate that. So every time the presentation's tweaked a little bit better, just to better inform. And so a lot of those questions that are coming in, we're trying to add to our FAQ page as well.
And this is totally different, Dr. Schultz, than our big levy referendum, the 124.9 million, which is dedicated to our buildings, whereas this is operating, which then goes primarily into, you know, our day-to-day costs of educating our kids.
As Margot reminds, this bond is for building, levy's for learning.
And the two buckets don't swap.
And cannot swap.
Nope, we keep them separate.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Learner's Edge Parent Portal View. Steve and Donna?
So the staff, Teaching and Learning, our Research and Evaluation Director, Donna Roper, have partnered with the district technology folks, represented tonight by Steve Butner, to put together a really cool-looking, and it's a great size, and it just looks good, it is good, it's got a lot of detail behind it, and it's a great access point about learner data. And just, I wanna applaud both of them for the great work they've done, so I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Good evening, Dr. Schultz and Edina School Board. My name is Steve Butner, I'm the Director of Media and Technology. To my right is a great colleague and a great person to work with, Donna Roper. Tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about an exciting product that we're working on, but I wanna couch it in the why, and that is, in the technology vision, we have a component which is engaging our families in a partnership towards education by providing them data and access to a consistent way for families to access information about their children. And we've actually been working on that for a number of years. Two years ago, we switched our student information system to Infinite Campus, and we created a change in our learning management system because our parents talked a lot about need to access information and be a partner in our child's learning. That doesn't mean that they have to be there all the time, but when needed, they like to be in that partner. We heard a lot about personalized learning, we, I like to think about how we do our learning and the ability for all of us to partner in that learning and how much stronger that will be. Through that process, we recognized there was a component that was missing in our ecosystem. And so prior to, when we converted to Infinite Campus and Schoology, we didn't have a lot of great access to the assessment information, so some of the high-stakes assessment information and some of that other information. And so with the help of Donna's knowledge and contacts, we were able to talk to a vendor and build what we're calling Learner's Edge. And it sits within the ecosystem, and so know that there's not, we haven't been able to find, nor do we think there's gonna be one system that satisfies all our needs. And so what we're doing is, we're creating a portal or a dashboard that is stakeholder-centric. It's the same dashboard that our teachers use, it's the same dashboard our students use, and it's the same dashboard that our parents use. But when each one of those groups access this portal, information is presented in a little bit different way so that it becomes actionable to them and to what they need. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Donna where she can talk a little bit about what that Learner's Edge does for us.
Right. So the vision behind the design really did come from the strategic plan and all-for-all, building partnerships and personalized learning. And so what we recognize is that we had a need. We had a need to develop something for all learners in our system. And that's exactly what this tool is designed and will continue to be worked on and developed to do, that is to provide insight that's actionable to all the learners in our system, including students, teachers, parents, and building principals. So what we've got so far in Phase 1 completed, like Steve said, is the assessment information, the standardized test scores for parents. And what they'll see, and again, so experience, develop, grow, and evolve our learners and our, no matter what student principal, we need you to have access to information that can help us work towards that continuous improvement process. So in our secure electronic access module for parents, they see all the information that they've had in the past with a few enhancements. They will have access to some learning resources in there that they haven't had before, for example, links directly to the Lexile webpages that make it easy for them to find books at reading levels that their children's scores indicate. They'll have access to learning locator codes, which are state-delivered resources for parents once their child has taken the MCA. They can get at strand-level data. For our high school students, they'll be able to see AP scores and ACT scores. Our access tests for our English language learners, the results will be sitting in there. And we hope, you know, that parents will appreciate getting this in a timely way, just like our teachers will appreciate getting this information in a timely way so that they can use it to make improvements in instruction. And yeah, so this is just kind of telling you what we've got in there right now. There are some graphing features that we've added to kind of show growth over time. We like that everybody's gonna be able to see the same information. It is really about partnering, it's partnering with students, partnering with parents. And then just the multiple stakeholders that are currently using the tool, our principals, teachers, district administrators. We have begun the work on our continuous improvement process, and we are planning to revisit data quarterly with the use of this tool as assessment data is rolled in. And we'll be looking at gathering common assessment information, which is new. That'll be the work of this year to kind of flush out those processes and make sure that we've got good data coming in that we can use to inform learning and instruction. And then the last piece on here is the student dashboard part, which we'll also be working on very diligently this year to gather information around goals and accomplishments and interests that they might have, so.
So can I just ask a quick question? So what's the, so for families, for parents, this essentially looks like what school view used to look like, has all the access to standardized tests and things like that. So what are you hoping that'll include in the future that might look different than what we're used to?
Right. So as we implement the ability to kind of lift up those common assessments for mastery and assessments that get after the educational competencies, those would be added. So we are trying to be forward-thinking and recognize that, you know, assessments are a critical piece, but they're not the only piece. There's a lot of other information important to learning, and so we're gonna really be very intentional, very thoughtful about making sure that we're sharing important information with families and students.
So I know we talked a little bit about this in Teaching and Learning, and I don't know if you have any graphics to show it, but, you know, we had mentioned, and Lisa just said it, you know, right now, the way it looks is pretty similar to what we had in the past, but you talked about some more additional information that's linked in there. Can you maybe point out, Steve, where some of those are and how parents could get a little bit deeper information?
Go ahead, Donna, I'll drive and you can talk. So here we're on the MAPS scores. Go ahead.
So for example, sorry, so for example, if you wanted to go into math and you were to look at MCA results, and I guess I need to find one for this year, there's a little score in here, where is it? No. The learning locator code, which is coming up. Well, I need a 2017 kid. Let's see here. This must be a ninth, 10th grader didn't take it. Well, let's see.
Well, let me, a couple pieces is, you can see here, you can dial in on the score and you can see the sub-areas of the test results, so you see the composite score, but then you can also dial in. You can also look at the information a little bit differently, so if I change that, it can expand that information out so I can read that information. So you see the RIT scores, you see the percentile the student is in. At the top, you see some information about how that student's doing as a cumulative, unweighted GPA, some of the credits. And then if you go to the test graph area, you have the MAPS score, and it's a trend line, and then you have the MCA. line, and then you have the MCA, and it shows where they currently are doing, under exceeds expectations, meets expectations partly, or doesn't meet. And so, every year, what we'll do is, we get the MCA information in, we'll push this in, and so you're able to take a look at this, not only of how your child compares or they're doing in the scores, but be able to see that over time and be able to track this information over time. And again, this is not just the MAP or the MCAs, but the AP tests are coming in here, the ACT scores are coming in. So it becomes a pretty rich area for information that you can celebrate with your child, or you can look at areas where you want to work on. And what I like about this is being a partnership on it. When it gets to the reading area, if you're looking for books that are at your child's level, Lexile level, you can click on that link and it will bring you off into the Lexile area where you can find additional books or book titles that might be of interest for your child as well.
So I'm wondering, in the future, and please correct me if I'm wrong, are we looking, as we look to get to more standards-based grading in the future, is this a place where maybe you would see the standards and see where your child is in terms of meeting those standards in different classes? Is that our vision?
Absolutely.
But I know that's far away.
But I think it's, I think that's the secret sauce in this tool, is that I don't know, we do collect information, and we are looking at Mastery Connect, which is a tool that we use, which allows our teachers to quickly be able to gauge competency towards our standards. And that's a great look for a parent or a teacher at this year. This is how my child's doing at the expected standards for this year. What we see Learner's Edge fitting in is how can we use that as our continuum from K through 12? So what we're very excited about is if, and we've done a lot of hard work last year of identifying what are our core power standards, and if we can articulate what those are, and it's connected to Mastery Connect or other ways to assess, we can actually create a K through 12 continuum of how our child's doing in competency-based grading, which allows us to look back multiple years, and more importantly, I think, look forward. Now, I'm not suggesting that technology is going to replace our teachers, because we heard tonight about how technology can be a distraction for our students. But we have to admit that technology is a tool that can provide additional resources and different opportunities for our students to be able to gain knowledge. We see this as a great way for our students to be able to show some independence, to create where they have areas of spark, and to be able to explore knowledge on their own as well, and be able to take credit for that and have credit for mastery if they can do it. So that's just some of the ideas that we're thinking about in this Learner's Edge.
Well, this may be a better concluding comment, but you should actually ask yours as well. I want to celebrate how far we've come with what you're showing tonight. We've been talking about this direction and this goal since the inception of the 2012 strategic plan, and at that time, when we were outlining as a board, Teaching and Learning Committee, and as a partnership with all of our lead team and our staff, was, this was a direction we knew was important to go. At that time, I don't think this technology existed to actually show it, so we were envisioning what was possible, and technology kind of had to catch up to really be able to speak and create something that we could use with parents, teachers, students, in a pretty seamless fashion. So it recognizes an incredible partnership, so I thank all of you here for making this possible, and just excited for what we can do as a partnership with students, parents, and teachers to really enhance learning. This has been a long time in development, and as you pointed out, we're not finished. There's still more work to be done, but I think that the direction we've outlined is the right direction, and we're going to be able to make it even better. But Amir, I know you had a question as well.
Yeah, no, I think that's terribly important, especially in iterative process, the celebration often doesn't come up enough, it tends to be towards the time where you feel that you've accomplished, as opposed to you're accomplishing and you're proud of what you've accomplished so far, and you're proud of your plan moving forward, so thank you for that. Now, my question, I guess, was looking back, trying to find a way to make it something that's worth logging into more often. Because I think once you get the MCA scores and the AP scores, it starts to sound like an annual tool or semi-annual, and it seems like it's got such an amazing power to connect so many people who are relevant in child's life, in the child himself or herself, somehow trying to find a way to make it more relevant, knowing, of course, that from a teacher's point of view, one more thing to update for every student who often, it would be a problem as well. But maybe, maybe a certain timeline, maybe monthly or so. And I'm thinking about things that are harder to get at, especially in response to some of the comments we heard earlier about what are students doing on their own? You could tie it into our core competencies about communication, a creative thinker, innovative thinker, responsible citizen, is this person a motivated lifelong learner? And really, what you're starting to comment on qualitatively is, how is this person using win time? How is this person performing up to potential? To try to get back towards some of those incentives, so that it's not an email home or call home, which is seen as so punitive that it tends not to happen at a time which would direct a student towards utmost potential, and instead directs that student who's at risk of not meeting standards, or distracting others to the point where they're not meeting standards, and it is more of a punitive thing. So I don't know exactly how that would look, but I think it gets towards making this more useful more often. The Lexile resource seems like it is already maybe a weekly usefulness, but more of that, especially in response to parent feedback, if not weekly, over the week, maybe at least monthly, more often than conferences.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, and that really is, you just hit the nail on the head with that one, because it is about, in, right now, in the iterative fashion that we assess, and the multiple instruments that we use, the initial phase of this was to just get those important pieces in one place so they can be synthesized and we can make sense of them and make, you know, move the action closer to having impact. But you're right, the idea is to gather a lot of other kinds of assessment and data that tell us how kids, you know, are learning in order to have even more impact. So that's exactly where we're headed.
One of my questions, and I'm not sure if this is how they're going to play together, but the tools that we have for seeing how our kids are doing on a more day-to-day basis, the grades, whatever, how are we, is there going to be a way to look at both of those? And even when some of the people talking tonight about, you know, well, my kid's here, how do I know if they're getting challenged? So if we look at that chart where the bar is going up and it can be in the various colors, you know, if we have a kid who's in the, you know, in the red or yellow, are we, what are we doing to improve that for them and meet their needs? But if you've got the kid who's up in the, what was it, blue, and they're constantly up here, how does that help direct us? And they're getting the A's, how does that direct us to say, okay, what can we do still to challenge those kids further? And how do, I'm just wondering how those tie together? Or if we saw a complete disconnect? We see the testing in the blue-green, but we see grades that are kind of, like, where are the alerts that help us to combine those two things? Because you do have the day-to-day versus, as Amir was pointing out, the kind of once-a-year type testing.
Yeah, and I think the day-to-day is in the gradebook and in campus, and I do think that that is really important for parents to stay, you know, paying attention to and in connection with your classroom teacher. You know, these standardized tests are a point in time, and, you know, they're a part of the picture, but I do think that the day-to-day classroom instruction and what's going on in the classroom is the more important piece, and right now, that sits inside of Infinite Campus in the gradebook. So for now, they're two separate systems. It's possible that we can, you know, make decisions about displaying data redundantly in different systems. That would make it seem like there's maybe more in one system, or that both pieces of information are visible in the system you're in. But for right now, parents are looking at gradebook, and this is the same in, you know, many districts. They have a gradebook that's coming out of their SIS, and they have a different tool to look at standardized.
I'm just wondering how we can make them work together at some point to help inform us, I mean, especially if there's a, something that should, that a teacher should be catching, that a parent should be catching, to make sure that we're, you know, getting on it rather than at the end of the year when we take that next MAP test or whatever. So I'm wondering just how they can eventually talk to each other, Steve.
So I think we have some opportunities there, like Donna said, that we are at our Phase One, but we do believe that because this is connected to our learning management system, Schoology, which is where a lot of content resides and some great teaching opportunities, if we can, if we know what our standards are, and we can start tying resources, and not just online resources, but literature resources that we have in our media center, I mean, we have books in our media centers and our libraries, that we can tie suggested resources in there and actually create opportunities to interact with our teachers, and not only our teachers, but other advisors or advisees, or create other opportunities. What I think what we do is crowdsource the ability to bring resources that aren't confined to just that classroom or that teacher experience, and so that we're able to allow students that have a spark in an area or have an interest or are starting to accelerate in one area to be able to access resources, both digital, books, and opportunities to mentor or mentee. And so, we see this as kind of that glue that kind of can help not only understand where our students are, but provide opportunities for those students and parents to be able to seek enrichment opportunities or opportunities to remediate if we want as well. And so, this tool has the information of where my child is, it knows where my child should be going or where they've been, and the idea behind that is now to connect it with resources and opportunities that are both human, digital, and analog, library books and books and literature as well, so those child can pursue those passions and pursue their learning in a personalized manner. So it is a way to do that.
So if I could piggyback on what Sarah was saying, I think what we're hoping for is, what we've heard from parents is, they're going along and their grades are this, but then I see a surprising standardized test score. Or vice versa, I'm understanding this as their testing, but their grades aren't matching what it should be. So when there's a disconnect, is there a way that the systems can alert the parents so we're not relying on the parents to know it, that there's something that's pushing out saying, there's something that's not congruent here? Is there a system someday soon that that might happen? Sort of a push-out instead of a parent having to dive in?
Right, you're like an algorithm that we can write that can, there are algorithms that we're exploring, and so, I mean, the answer is yes, we can technically do anything. If we've got the data, we can, you know, technically write an algorithm that says, okay, if a child this and this and this, let's send an alert.
Okay.
But I do think, you know, having our teachers really dig in and understand what next is the primary focus right now with our continuous improvement, so.
Thank you.
I just want to finally commend Donna Roper. This has been her vision for a long time, and it's a pleasure to throw technology at helping to solve it, so thank you, Donna, for allowing me to be part of your team.
Thank you. Next, we have Policy Review, Policy 620.
It's a nice intro for policy. I don't think we've had a policy before. We have that on stage. Maybe it's been there for heaven's sake. That's me learning. I remember that day, that was a young student at Creek Valley who was a phenomenal instructor, introducing me to something, so, kind of a nice thing, learning something all the time. Anyway, policy discussion. We have one policy for discussion this evening, 620, which is Credit for Learning, formerly called Course Credit for Learning. The goal here, I do want to acknowledge the support we've had. As always, our policy committee could not accomplish the work that happens without a lot of support. So in this case, Randy Smazl, thank you for your review of this policy, and Stacy Dyer and Sarah Shandle, as always, for keeping track of these changes and helping us to move forward. The key changes in this policy are two-fold.
Oh, thank you. My mic is off. Start all over, thanks to everyone. Clarification on paths for receiving credit for learning, that's one of our hoped-for goals, and then second, there is an update in statute language regarding that grading for weighted grades be clarified in policy. So those are the two aspects that we're hoping to clarify with this particular draft. So if there are any notes, I'm happy to take them back to the committee.
So I had a question on Roman numeral four D, which says, "College-based courses that do not provide college credit will be considered." So what about college-based courses that do provide college credit?
So my understanding here, and Randy, I may ask you for some support on this, but differentiating between PSEO, post-secondary educational opportunities, where a student may be taking a course and they're intending to use that credit toward a college degree or actual, you know, an AA, BABS, and so forth, it can't count twice. But Randy, can you clarify that a little bit further?
And not? So generally speaking, the weighted grades have only applied to advanced placement courses because that is curriculum that we've had control over inside of the school district. So the question though is...
Question about D, right?
Right, D talks, says, "College-based courses that do not provide college credit will be considered as part of the graduation requirements." So the question is, what about college-based courses that do provide college credit? So, I mean, PSEO is probably a great example. I thought that that would count towards the high school graduation requirement, but yet you could get a college credit for it.
But PSEO, I believe, is its own separate program and doesn't need this particular policy. It's excluded earlier in the policy. It still does its own thing. This doesn't change PSEO.
So umptyump, I don't know if that's referenced here. You can get college credit for that, and you, we used to be able to get high school credit. So I'm just kind of, this sentence appears to imply that if you get college credit, you can't get graduation credit for high school, and I'm not sure that that's our standard. So I guess I would just ask for a follow-up on that.
Are you asking whether it is counted as weighted?
No.
Grade? You're just, you're asking whether it's counting as graduation credit?
Right.
Yep, so typically concurrent enrollment opportunities would count for graduation credit, or they would count for college credit. So if a student has taken a PSEO class, they get a college level, PSEO is a little bit different, because if they're taking PSEO, they're earning the college credit, but it meets the high school graduation requirements.
So I just think you need a little clarity on that sentence. I'm not sure that...
Yep, we will circle that one back. So what I'm hearing is your question is, what about a course that, is there an example of a course that can be used for both college and high school graduation credit?
Correct.
With umptyump as an example?
Umptyump is an example historically.
Great.
So I assume it still exists.
Yes, we'll take that one back.
And then the other question is, is there like a 30-second explanation as to the difference between Roman numeral five and Roman numeral six? Because they both seem to have similar standards for what you would submit. They both deal with prior learning, so is there just like a quick overview as to how five is different than six?
We did talk about this at the committee level. If you'd like to do a 30-second right now, Randy, that'd be great, otherwise...
It's all you get.
So I apologize, because I don't have the policy sit in front of me, but, so five is the portfolio and six is the credit by assessment?
Well, five is labeled, five is labeled credit.
There is overlap.
Right, so five is credit by assessment.
But what you're raising, Lenny, is a good question, and we did spend quite a bit of time at Teaching and Learning, working toward this clarification, so if that part still is not clear, I do think it's worth going back to take another look at it.
So I would add that there's two different routes by which students can earn credit. So in one route, they can submit a portfolio of evidence, which is their evidence of work that they've done in the past. And what would happen is, the teachers, the committee would sit down and they would review the evidence, which was student-generated evidence, and they would review that evidence according to rubric and criteria and determine if the student has already met competencies for the class. So the evidence is generated from the student's portfolio submission. The other route is when students come in and they want to take our assessments to create that evidence on the spot. So credit by assessment would be when they come in, they take the common assessment for the class, and they're creating that evidence in real time. The other evidence for a portfolio may come from the past, the credit by assessment's creating evidence at that moment. If they pass the, that assessment, then they get credit for the class. So they could go the, they could go the route of creating their own evidence and bringing it... it in via portfolio, or looking to demonstrate evidence of competency on the teacher's assessment, if that makes sense. Those are the two pathways.
So it does make sense. I'm not sure that that distinction is clear within the policy. But I understand, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. And there is some overlap, but I hear, I hear your question, and it, we can definitely take a look at that.
Okay. That was all I had? Well, I mean, I've got like minor, like little things that I'll just email you on.
You can just email me those. We'll take care of those as well.
Right.
Anything else?
I just have kind of a general question. This is obviously written for high school because, I mean, obviously there is certain standards to graduate, and so kids are trying to make sure that they can check those standards off. I was thinking more in the middle school setting now that we have a clear six, eight middle school. There are occasionally times when a student may not feel, I don't know, take art or FIEC. You know, I can prove that I'm a great athlete, and why do I need to take FIEC? Because I'd rather take this art class, which then frees up an option for me. And I know that now we're getting into, instead of requirements for graduation, but state guidelines and what kids have to take. But have we ever thought about that, just as an option, when we, when we're taking a look at our whole six, eight curriculum and what we're doing? Could a student ever look at that type of option?
Yeah, I think that's a really exciting direction for us in that part of what we're trying to move the system toward is competency-based learning. So regardless of what level you're at, if you've already demonstrated the competency, then what's next for you? Is it learning new competencies, or is it having an opportunity to explore some application of content that you already have? So that's absolutely part of the discussion. World Languages, for example, are building a six through 12 competency-based model. So the goal is that when students come in and say they have previous language experience, that we can honor that in our, in our language course structure. The same with mathematics and with other areas. So what you're referring to is something we're calling a competency-based progression or a competency-based approach. And that's one of the tenants of the personalized learning structure, is that we figure out ways to be able to honor that. In a traditional school structure, that's, that's challenging for teachers to honor, and they're, they're, they try to differentiate within that classroom. And it's, it's just a challenge that they have.
All right. Thank you. We are moving on to superintendent goals. John, that's, you're listed as presenter.
Okay. So I worked on superintendent goals over the last couple of weeks and worked with the chair and also with the HR and the resources committee and presented the goals. I only have discussion about this in the work session. So I've organized some objectives and goals around the broad, around the teaching plan, personalized reading for all students, coherent and comprehensive educational programs, effective and valued district partnerships, and even next generation and future schools. So the changes that were made in the last, in the work session was number five, to emphasize number five, that was added by HR, implement process to measure success of programming. Talk about the programs that we're implementing here in the district to ensure that we're measuring their success. And then the other one is to provide leadership to the policy implementation, how do we push that policy out and make sure it's understood by the rest of the district. So I'm not going to go through each of the goals. I welcome any other highlights the board would like to provide. Otherwise, I hope it, it will be asked to be to work on this.
So, thank you. This was discussed in the work session and probably more, we also discussed this, well, I met with John to go over to try to put in, I actually tried to reduce the list because I thought he had too many things on his goals, but I was unsuccessful in that area. So the things that we kind of added, which are important in my mind, are implementing process to measure success of programming and tracking of programming to see, identify if there's a gap, identify if there is not progress being made, so that we can then work on those particular areas. And I think this is consistent with the data collection that we've been working on the last few years. So the HR committee did work on this with John, and then the board did also. So I think these are some pretty ambitious goals and some pretty good ones that will help the district move forward.
And I overlooked one other one that you talked about, identifying trends and gaps in student academic performance and build understanding of interventions and other programs to support academic performance.
Right. The theory there is we've got intervention programs. Are they working?
Hello, did you want to mention the December check-in?
Oh, so, correct. Under the current contract for the superintendent, we have a December review, which is informal by the board, followed by the formal review in, I believe, June. So this is a change from the prior superintendent contracts where it was a once-a-year check-in. I think that both John and the board felt it was important to have twice-a-year check-ins so that we can, if there's a change in terms of a goal, we could make the change. If we're not making adequate progress, we know midway through the year rather than at the end of the year. We don't grade our students annually. So yes, that was a change from the prior superintendent contract.
Can you get a bar graph and run this out?
Yeah.
I'll work on it.
We'll do it. Well, Steve will have to put that together. Steve and Donna.
Don't tempt them.
Anything else from the board on this one? Otherwise, let's move on to our action items. The first year, first action item is the strategic guiding change plan for the school year calendar. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved?
Second.
And Gwen, are you?
Yes, it is that time again. And we have parameters before you that we have discussed at a work session to consider as we would like to begin working on the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school year calendars. And we would like to begin in the month of October so that we can take a look at the calendar, look at calendar for 2018-19 that starts before and after Labor Day, just in case there are some construction challenges. And then for 2019-20, we'd like to look at a calendar that starts before Labor Day, rezone that kind of calendar as we have had in past years. We also will take a look at some other things. One of the challenges that we have really worked on is making sure that we get our professional development built into the calendar on a regular basis so that teachers have time to work together, not only among grade levels but across grade levels. We have heard that concern raised numerous times by the teachers. And then we would, there have also been questions raised if we could possibly end the first semester just prior to winter break. We looked at numerous schedules last time, but we will continue looking at that again because we recognize that when students need a break, they want a full break, not anticipating that they're going to have finals in a couple of weeks after returning from winter break. And then the last couple of other pieces, one is that we will bring these recommendations, will come back to you periodically, and then you will make the final decisions on the calendars as you did last time for both years. And in years past, we would set the calendar, and then the high school would make some modifications. So I've already reached out to the high school to ask them to include their changes in the full calendar that is approved by the board in November, so that it's a consistent calendar across the, across the grade levels. I welcome any questions or comments for Randy or me.
I just had a question that kind of relates to the Labor Day start, but do we have anything in here that addresses the need to, we talk about, you know, making sure our learning days are early in the year, prior to high stakes tests and different things like that. Do we have anything that addresses that for the calendar committee to make sure that when we're looking at the calendar, we're trying to get, you know, front load our learning, which is not the right word, but.
I hear what you're saying. And yes, we do. We do automatically do that. So we look at when the MAP tests are going to take place, or the MCAs, or Fast Bridge, or some of those tests, as well as the tests that are offered at the, at the high school, like, you know, the ACTs and SATs. Yes, we do take that into consideration, as well as the AP testing and to make sure that we have maximum days of school prior to the test being offered.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So within the guiding change document, we've got resume school start prior to Labor Day for 2019-20. I think historically, we've had that as consider school start time prior to Labor Day. And I don't know what the board's view is, whether we want to say that you have to start before, or whether that's a consideration for the calendar. So I throw that out as a question for the board more, unless you're.
Actually, the calendar committee asked that, you know, we worked really hard to move it before Labor Day, and the calendar committee did ask, when I met with you again, to please encourage that we resume starting school before Labor Day if at all possible. The reason that we are after Labor Day, excuse me, this time was because of construction, and we needed the longer construction season.
So you're saying the calendar committee actually wants that as a priority?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Yes, I'm expressing their concerns and desires.
Thank you.
Can we answer your question, Chair?
Well, yes, I mean, it told me the basis for resume rather than consider.
Okay.
What was the state statute around that?
What did the committee, what evidence is having the committee make the recommendation for starting before Labor Day?
I'm sorry, what's the question again?
What, why does the calendar committee want a pre-Labor Day start? What evidence are they using to make that recommendation? And now you might not have it now, but.
I think it was from the survey results that we had before. It was from, there was, there was a lot of interest in, in us starting before Labor Day, and there was yet, you know, yet at the time that we were changing, transitioning from after Labor Day to before Labor Day, was, there was a lot of discussion about that. And we think that people, you know, finally recognized the good parts about that, and students were ready to begin. That would be the, that would be the reason.
Now, the state statute around that had something about agreements with other districts. Does that provide a great deal of leeway that a school may start before Labor Day? If they're, I know the state statute says you can't do it by default. You can do it to accommodate quite a bit of construction, or you can do it because of agreements with other districts, and that's what I just didn't quite understand.
Yes, and we are within the guidelines that are set about the construction. We checked with.
For 1920?
Yes.
And then into the future? Because this seems like something then that the committee is saying we're trying to find into the future. What's that agreement with other districts?
Well, when I say the future, it's talking.
400,000, but we won't have that every year.
Yes, we will. I think you will. We will. We will always have.
Just maintenance ongoing.
Facilities, keeping the wings up.
Okay.
Be well over that every year.
Right. So I think we.
And I have sent, a letter has been sent to the Minnesota Department of Education indicating it is just for 10 years, so it's not into infinite, but.
Into our planning.
Right, and we only go up until 19, 2019-20 anyhow.
So I guess this isn't really for Gwen. I think this is just a discussion for all of us in administration is, if we're, if we're going to make a recommendation that is against, not against state statute, but still in the guidelines, but literally, what evidence, do we have any evidence to support that starting before Labor Day is more advantageous for student learning? Do we have evidence that, can we get evidence that? I don't know if we can, but all our decisions, I know we all have the same goal in mind, which was we want to enhance student learning. So if starting before Labor Day actually does that, we should be gathering that information and shouting for the rooftops. And John, as a superintendent, how have other districts handled this? Because I know that the issue goes back to mid-'80s when the state changed the law, but from what I understand, the law was based not in an educational decision, but in tourism and other activities, you know, the state fair, et cetera. So the decision was based in that, and I understand that they have a strong lobbying group, and I also understand the norms and culture of our state. We all get that. I'm just wondering where, because there are these loopholes and we can use them, but do we, do we come to, does a board, does a superintendent, does a district come to a resolution or a thought, based on what you're saying, to say that, you know, these are the educational reasons that we do this, or that we believe this is better for kids? Because I think, I wonder, you know, the pressure that we put on the calendar committee to, to feel that the way that they do, but is it based in something, and should there be direction from a superintendent or a board?
Well, we are, we are at the mercy of the state statute to start the calendar before or after Labor Day within the specifications they give, if it's 400,000. I think if you talk to superintendents across the state, year-round models have been, have been shared at the state level, so you don't have that break in learning. That has, that has not been brought, brought forward to the state, or the state has not changed that. So there's always those, but there's always those opportunities to change the calendar, which is primarily for agrarian reasons, so that individuals and students and kids can work on the farms. But in the metro, we don't have that. So how can we do schooling year-round is kind of the question, how can we change that calendar? But the state's pretty strict on, on keeping the calendar structured the way it is. So I don't know what, other than lobbying the state, we're within state statute.
So statement or a conclusion by our district, even though we're using a loophole, may not be the way that you should do it since it's, since it's a state statute.
I think you should take advan.
Like, what do we do?
I, I think you, I think you use the state statute to offer the best flexibility for your calendar and use that construction to manage the construction, but also take advantage of starting earlier for students. You know, we're starting, what, a week earlier? So I don't know what the educational benefit, the real educational benefit of a week earlier is. I don't have any data, but.
To follow up on Lisa's point about that benefit, if it, if it gets to the goal of ending the term before the long break.
Correct.
That might be the benefit there.
True. Yeah.
It would require more than one week, but, I mean, other states, I mean, most states start the second week or third week of August.
Right.
Minnesota's definitely a outlier.
I don't recall the survey, and I guess it's worth going back to look. I remember this was an issue where I heard a lot of different opinions, like any issue, but it wasn't, wasn't a clear cut. And I don't think it's just, you know, even if the origins were agrarian, which I don't know if I'm on board with, because July and August aren't really the big planting, harvesting seasons. But, you know, these origins are historic nonetheless, and they're not really relevant to the decision-making process we have. And yet, parents have found a way to make summer high-quality part of raising their kids. And so, you know, going even just a week or two earlier than Labor Day is, is something that's worthy of, of discussion and public input. But it's, it may get to more learning, especially as Lisa said, and it may get towards something that almost everybody would value, not going into a two-week break with finals on the other end.
This ranks up there with school start times.
Oh, there you go.
So my, my recollection, actually, when we talked about this a number of years ago, is that we actually had some success on our bids when we had them starting a week earlier. And so in that sense, it was consistent with the construction, and that, my recollection of the analysis is, well, okay, it seemed to have some positive benefits for construction. What's the impact on education? Because we wouldn't adopt it if it was negative to education. So my recollection is this was a two-step process. We looked at construction, found it to be beneficial, at least in some of the years in our bids, and then there was the potential opportunity for some educational positives. Certainly, we didn't see educational negatives, other than, you know, one week less of summer. But in terms of the school year, I think that we weren't seeing negatives, and there was some anecdotal, but not hard data, of it being positive. And again, you know, it probably wouldn't be popular, but if you could start in the middle of August and be done by the end of December, I think that would be worthy of looking at also.
The first semester.
The first semester, yes. That would be worthy to look at. And maybe this is just a, a way of getting towards that, so.
So Chair, did we answer your question about the word consider or resume prior to Labor Day for?
We, we did answer it from my perspective, or Gwen answered it from my perspective. Someone did.
I just want to make sure that Gwen and her team knows what.
So we're not changing it?
Right, we're not changing it. So the only other question I have is, in the background, it says, "The administration will be seeking additional input from the school board prior to finalizing the guiding change document." But this is finalizing it. So is this that you're going to get more input from us prior to finalizing? So, is this that you're going to get more input from us prior to finalizing the calendar?
Um, no, that was, this, this conversation is helpful in, in getting additional information.
Okay. So, any other questions? I've seen the, all right, all in favor of approving the guiding change document for the school year calendar 2018-19 and 1920, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the proposed tax levy payable in 2018. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax levy for 2017 payable in 2018?
So moved.
Second.
And Margot, I think you said you were going to talk to us about the levy, so here's your chance.
Ms. Friedman, Superintendent Schultz and School Board. This is the time of year that we do the proposed levy certification, and it's very timely because many of the, the questions that are coming forward on our informational presentations also tie into this, this presentation. So, as part of the calendar or the agenda here, I'll just quickly go through the calendar and the process and our preliminary levy certification. We did have Finance Committee last week and went through the information there and had a discussion about it. Part of the calendar process is we must approve a proposed levy by September 30th. And then the final levy certification is part of the board's December board meeting. At that meeting, we also have to have what we call truth in taxation, so the public has opportunity to provide feedback. Within that calendar of timeframe, we, once you approve it, we submit the information to the MDE and the county auditor, and the county auditor spends October preparing the information, the actual truth in taxation statements that you receive as property owners. Those go out in November, and I just want to make a point of clarification there that when those go out, they do not reflect the November election because obviously it takes some time for the county auditors to prepare that. I believe there's a, a statement probably in fine print somewhere that says it doesn't include the results of any November elections, but just so you're aware of that. And however, the final levy certification in December will include the results of the November election. So, our preliminary levy, because we have a operating referendum sunsetting, is reduced significantly because it's not in there, and we won't know that result till after November 7th. And so, the preliminary levy shows a, just slightly over a 27% decrease in the levy certification. We are recommending, and we just did discuss it at Finance Committee, that the, we approve the maximum here for the preliminary levy. The state is continuing to make changes to the overall state data. I've reviewed the district data at length. There is one change that I've requested to have occur in the data or corrected in the data. It, it isn't in there yet. It's in the numbers I'm presenting to you tonight, but in their latest run this morning, it's, it's not updated yet. So, I'm not anticipating any major changes from the MDE, but it's always good in, in September to approve maximum because the state is continuing to work through some formula corrections. I don't know if we can move this forward a little bit here. One thing I will clarify here, the, our levy, most, the majority of our levies, almost all of them except for the technology levy are based on authorized revenue typically on either a project base like our long-term facility maintenance of an actual cost or student enrollment. And so, it's that combination that, it, it isn't the increase in property value that provide, drives additional revenue for us. It's either voter-approved levies or state formula based on the number of students we have. We can move to the next one. Our property values have increased the two ways, there's two market, two property values that are used in a variety of the levies. Referendum market value increased just under 4% and then adjusted net taxing capacity went up just a little over a percent. And then, go to the next one. We do have voter-approved referendums, which are our major portion of our tax levy certification, and then we do have those set by state formula. And then in combination with being a state formula also, we have to demonstrate local need and have approval. I do often get asked when tax statements go out, what are those other levies or non-voter approved levies? And you see some examples here where we have to substantiate the expense, show the, our predicted enrollment, get state approval, have board approval, that kind of thing. We do not have the authority to just levy a dollar amount because we, we want to, so. Next one. So, the factors contributing to change, the main one is the operating referendum sunset. Otherwise, we have had little change in the various other areas, but I did summarize them for you. One thing we're going to continue to work on between now and December is taking a look at some areas where, you know, potentially we might be able to reduce to soften the impact of if the referendum question is successful, we want to be as, are sensitive as we can be to the taxpayer, and we'll look for some opportunities in a couple of the areas to increase them a little bit less or decrease, decrease them a little bit to soften that impact, especially in the first year. Here's just a summary of the detail, five-year history of the levies along with the individual types of levies, and clearly you can see where the voter-approved levy that, that sunset is, it's zero or basically negative. That's a formula thing within the levy certification process, but, next slide. Any questions? Again, I will work on it between now and December, look for opportunities where we would be able to save a little bit, but would recommend your approving the maximum for this preliminary levy certification. Any questions?
Any questions? So, I, I have a question. I'm not sure I'm going to understand the answer, but.
You must have been able to answer.
So, the market value analysis showed a 3.95% increase versus a state of 5.24. The adjusted net tax capacity showed only a 1.26% increase versus state average of 4.5. So, proportionally, the net tax capacity increased less than the market value analysis. Any idea why?
It's curious to me too, but they're two different formulas in how they calculate property values. And if I look historically, they haven't always aligned like exactly right. Adjusted net taxing capacity is a percent of the value, and so, maybe that has something to do with it. I certainly could check with our county auditor and also MDE to see if there's some statewide trends maybe or something specific to Edina on that.
So, I'm not sure I want to send you on that chase yet because I, but let me think about it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the proposed tax levy for 2017 payable in 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. We're on to policy review and, so, yes, policy approval. So, before I get, Regina, were we going to pull 634?
Recommendation that we do table 634, and we'll clarify some of that information and bring it back next month.
So, can I get a, a motion to modify by removing 634 and tabling it to next month?
Having already been seconded, all move.
All in favor of the, the motion to modify, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, can I get a motion to approve policies 521, 526, and 529?
So moved. Second.
Regina, has there been any substantive changes since last month?
No, there have not.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving policies 521, 526, and 529, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Health Service Associates Agreement. Can I get a motion to approve the master agreement between District 273 and Health Service Associate Organization?
So moved. Second.
Gwen, I think you're up again, and it's not the calendar.
I'm actually, no, it is not the calendar, but I, at this time, I'm going to defer this recommendation to Stacy Guyer, who is the Human Resource Manager. She and Ra Choth, the Controller, worked very closely with this particular group, so I'm going to turn it over to Stacy.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Schultz. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I had to make sure I was told number one rule, turn on the microphone, so I've passed the first step. I'm very happy to come before you and to talk about our HSA negotiations. It was a great group to work with, and so, I'm bringing forward the tentative agreement, and I have a few highlights to share with you tonight. The salary schedule increased by 2% in year one and in year two. The health insurance increased 1 per, 1.5% in year one and 2% in year two. We had an increase to the TSA match from 1% to 2%, and then some change in the longevity language and when the HSAs are eligible. Ultimately, the total compensation package increased at 4.72%, and that was within the parameters that you had previously agreed to. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
Stacy, just for the audience awareness, members in this group currently?
The number of members?
Yeah.
There's about 11 members. So, there are Health Service Associates. There's about one at each site that supports the licensed school nurse.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the master agreement between District 273 and Health Service Associate Organization for 2017 through 19, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to information. We put staff recognition before adjournment. We do have a number of staff recognitions today. We've got a commendation of, and I didn't get pronunciations from Gwen in advance, but we have a commendation of Karen Bergman, who's the principal at Countryside for the job that she's been doing over there. We have a commendation of the DMTS team, and they did put everybody's name here, so I'm going to go through them. The individuals on DMTS who received, you know, a shout-out for a lot of hard work they did through, I think, getting, making sure we had technology post-construction, which is pretty good. So, the individuals, John Baird, Gary Bridges, Steve Butner, Bruce Coles, Adam Duffy, Megan Aberhart, Tammy Forby, Joshua Holland, Zach Horn, Tom Johnston, Kelly Krutz, Marilyn Cupp, Nathaniel Lindley, Jack Sylaski, and Michael Walker, who was here earlier today. And then our last commendation is of Janet Schmeele, Carmen Lavois, Geneva Fitzsimmons, Sue Engen, and Michael Prochasky for the work that they were doing at the high school and at Southview for the extra work that they have put in. And we want to thank all of our teachers and all of our staff for the hard work they do and for the, the work they're doing on behalf of our students. With that, do we have any announcements, leadership updates, committee reports? With nothing on the agenda, hearing no objection to adjourning, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.